Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of August 17th, 2020. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that there's a copy of the Opens Meetings Act posted in the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the pledge allegiance followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or opposition to the item. Testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. After all the public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. And then, on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue that's not on the agenda or for that date nor planned for any future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
For today's agenda, Monday, August 17th, 2020, in addition to having public comment in the council chambers, there will be a webinar that will be available for public comment for the city council meeting held on August 31st, 2020. And for those who wish to testify by webinar, you must register with the city clerk's office to participate. Please contact the city clerk's office at 402-441-7436 or by email at cityclerk@lincoln NE.gov. The city clerk's office must be notified by 12:00 PM the day of the meeting. In order to register, please provide your name, address, email address, and contact number. If you have any other concerns you wish to express to the city council, please email them to councilpacket@lincoln NE.gov. If you wish to appear in person on an item on the agenda, you may come to the county city building. Limited seating is available in the council chambers, or you may wait in the Billuxford Studio or in the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you're finished speaking, we ask that you can exit the chambers through the door to your immediate left. We ask those of the general public coming forward today to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, and given your address, and sign on the sign-in sheet at the entrance of the chambers there. Testifiers can use either microphone, and also there's hand sanitizer and microphone spray if you wish to choose to use that. For those individuals from city staff who are testifying, please state your name and title and the department that you're working for. And once you've testified and council doesn't have any questions of you, please exit to the doors to your immediate left. That's all for announcements. So the first item on our agenda is our consent agenda, section-
I have a point of order.
Yes.
Chair. I've noticed that many people in the chamber are not wearing masks, and I know it is mandated in the city of Lincoln that you wear masks. And I would respectfully ask, if you don't have a mask, does anyone need a mask? I would like our sergeant in arms to make a decision on this. I believe there are masks available if anybody would like one, but I think that is-
I was looking for the sergeant of arms.
Yeah, he is coming in.
Okay. If I could speak to him and then I'll address the council, is that all right?
Okay.
Yancey Christie, city attorney. It's my understanding that the sheriff's office, or that the sheriff is going to get masks right now-
Okay, then I-
-and to bring them in here for people that don't have masks.
I make a motion that we take a 15-minute recess until that has happened, and then we can reconvene once everyone has a mask on. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion.
I'll second that.
Do we do second, that we have a quick recess, 15 minutes?
Your microphone.
Does anybody have any other questions, Fox? Please call a roll.
Can you clarify who's second, please?
Tammy Ward.
Thank you. Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one.
We'll take a 15-minute recess.
And I need to turn on my mic. Okay. Madam Clerk? Call the first item of order.
Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, sections one through two.
Would anyone like to speak on behalf, on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. Any comments from the city council? Okay. Call a roll.
Items 1A through 1C was introduced by Raybold. They're moved.
Do we need-
Second.
Do we need to amend 1C?
No.
There's no amendment? Okay.
Can I get clarification on who seconded, please?
Ward.
Thank you. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Items 2A through 2F introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Our next item on the agenda would then be our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling item 4A, application of Red Stripe Inc. doing business at Sun Valley Lanes for an addition of an area, of an outdoor area approximately 49 feet by 30 feet, and expansion of an indoor area approximately 125 feet by 49 feet at 321 Victory Lane.
Is there anybody here that'd like to speak on this?
Please raise your right hand. And repeat after me, or answer my own, sorry. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is John Lucido. I'm the owner of Sun Valley Lanes, 321 Victory Lane here in Lincoln. I'm in the middle of a $4 million expansion and renovation, which was a pretty good idea about a year and a half ago. Now, of course, I'm wondering if it was or it wasn't. But as a part of what's going on, I fully expect to come back in front of this council because the project had to be broken up kind of in half because of some construction delays as well as some planning delays. So this request for my change my liquor license, I'll be actually asking for an additional square footage both inside and outside for volleyball and a green space. At this point in time now, it looks like it's going to be four to six months as opposed to doing it now. So that's just the unusual situation due to the pandemic that I would like to take as a consideration.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any questions, any comments? Yes.
Just to comment, so thank you, Mr. Chair, just to say thank you, and thank you for your perseverance during the pandemic and all the extra challenges that that brings. I know our part of the city is very excited in Northwest Lincoln, as is all the city. So thank you, and we're here to support your endeavor. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilperson Washington.
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming down. Would you mind describing the differences that the customers will see when they come into your redesigned, reconstructed?
Yes, in the first phase of the renovation, which is probably about a month away from completion, they'll see a larger arcade. We'll have an indoor laser tag arena. We've doubled the inside seating space of our lounge, and then we're adding an outdoor smoking patio basically with a couple fire pits and radiant heat, as well as a small green space directly off that seating area, which is in accordance with the bowling center itself.
Oh, that sounds very good. And can you tell me, what happens to the parking on the east side of your building right now?
The east, the northeast parking lot is the same. My neighbors at Speedway across the street have given me a parking agreement to use some overflow parking directly to the north. When the next phase is complete, I'll be getting another, pardon me, I don't know the exact number, but I want to say it's 55 to 60 spots on the south side of the facility because I purchased the old taxi cab dispatch building. That's the building that will become the indoor mini golf and the volleyball area. So until then, because of course I don't, I don't have use of that facility, we're not expecting a large increase of parking demand. But when, of course, it all comes together, that's when it'll change.
All right. Thank you very much. Sounds exciting.
Any other questions for John? Thank you for coming down, and thank you for investing in our town.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Our next item is item 4B, application of James Arthur Vineyards LLC doing business as James Arthur Vineyards Tasting Outlet for an addition of an indoor area approximately 40 feet by 60 feet at 803 Q Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Chairman McGinnis, members of the council, my name's Jim Ballard, B-A-L-L-A-R-D, owner of James Arthur Vineyards and the From Nebraska Gift Shop. And about a year, a little over a year ago, the owner of our building, Hubert Building down on 8th and Q decided to add some apartments above. And so during, we thought we'd do some construction and fix things up, but at the same time, the building, or the business just to the south of us that we shared a wall with, Licorice International, decided to move. So we decided at that time to knock down some walls and expand, expand our business down there. Like gentlemen before me, nothing like opening a new business during a pandemic, but we are there and we're open and ready to go. It's called the Haymarket Mercantile. So on the north side, we still have the From Nebraska Gift Shop, but on the south side, it's the Haymarket Mercantile, which is an awesome gift shop with a lot of fun items down there as well. We kept our tasting bar in the From Nebraska Gift Shop, and then also added a tap system of all of our hard ciders. We have a cidery going as well. And that side, the From Nebraska side, is already licensed with a, with a liquor license. And what we're requesting is to now just kind of move over to the south side and license that area as well. So that is what we're requesting.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ballard? Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next one. Madam Clerk?
Item 4C, application of Momo Pizzeria and Restaurante for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 95 feet by 65 feet at Momo Restaurant at 7701 Pioneer's Boulevard on August 29th, 2020, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Hello.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Anthony Bonelli, and I'm the CEO of Momo Food Service LLC doing business as Momo Pizzeria and Restaurante. And this is-
My name is Tara Schroder, manager at Momo Pizzeria, Lincoln, Nebraska, 7701 Pioneer's Boulevard.
This, Richard, and all of you, I just want to say thank you. These are tough times. Thank you for your service. It's not easy, so.
Today, we are requesting an extension for the SDL for a one-day event in our parking lot to the east off of our current patio liquor license. We do an annual event benefiting Lincoln area animal shelters, and even though this has been a very trying time for our business industry, we've pivoted well with all of the other changes, and we still want to keep our charity work going. So we believe- So, we believe that a liquor license for that day will help us do social distancing and hopefully bring a good amount of donations in for the day.
Any questions? Yes, Councilperson Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of things. One, the pooches on the patio sounds like a really fun event. But have you talked with your neighbors? Are they fine with the S D L for the day or the afternoon?
They're supporting this greatly.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Bonelli? Now, again, thank you guys for all you're doing and trying to keep the doors open.
We are.
It's not an easy time. No, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one, I move approval of items four A, B, and C.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any other questions about these three? Okay, seeing none, please call a roll.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Our next item. The agenda is section five of public hearing resolutions. Item five A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July sixteen through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
You want a motion to amend on that one? Or you need to have a motion on that?
That's in the voting.
Okay.
Does anybody want to talk about it?
We need to talk about it first.
Okay, anybody like to come forward and speak on the claims? New impending? Seeing none? Move on.
Okay. Item five B. Approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Saline County to define the mutual and separate responsibilities of each and the operation, management, support, monitoring, and evaluation of the Saline County Senior Services Program.
Good afternoon, members of council. Randy Jones, Director of Department of Aging, also known as Aging Partners. I'd like to speak to five B and five C jointly, please. These are two interlocal agreements that are among six that will come before the council in the next few weeks. Aging Partners is designated as the, is one of seven area agencies on aging to conduct planning and services under the older Americans Act, and that designation is given to us by the state unit on aging. We are required to enter into interlocal agreements with our neighboring counties, and these are being updated. The last ones date back to nineteen eighty-eight, so it's, it's good timing to get those updated. We receive both federal and state money for all the support that is behind these interlocal agreements. No city funds are used to support these interlocal agreements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Would you like me to read five Cs?
You do need to read it.
Five C is approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Polk County to define the mutual and separate responsibilities of each and the operation, management, support, monitoring, and evaluation of the Polk County Senior Services Program.
Does anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
Item five D is approving the naming of the new trail bridge connecting the Rock Island and Jamaica North Trails as the Great Plains Trails Network Connector.
Good afternoon, Lynn Johnson, Parks and Recreation. The action for the city council this afternoon is a recommendation that is coming from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to name a new trail bridge that is being connected or being constructed that will connect the Rock Island Trail to the Jamaica North Trail. It actually connects, also connects Densmore Park to Wilderness Park. This is Densmore Park. This is South Fourteenth Street, south of Old Cheney Road. The location of the new trail bridge is right here. It crosses the Burlington Northern Santa Fe tracks, and then it will connect to the Jamaica North Trail that parallels the, excuse me, the east side of Wilderness Park. It also provides a connection, as I said, into Wilderness Park. This is an artist's rendering of the bridge. It's a very long bridge. This, I think, is about a hundred and sixty-foot span over the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. Cost of this project is about one-point-two million dollars, and the Great Plains Trails Network initiated a significant fundraising campaign, and they raised about half of the amount of funds for this bridge. Another major portion of the funding for this project came from the Railroad Transportation Safety District. There was crossings of, unfortunately illegal crossings of the railroad tracks that were happening in this area as people were trying to access Wilderness Park from Densmore Park. So, this bridge is actually a significant safety enhancement within the trail system as well as making it an important connection within the system. The Parks and Recreation, the name that is being recommended to the council for approval by resolution this afternoon is the Great Plains Trails Network Connector, probably known as the GPTN Connector. I think, as the city council knows, the Great Plains Trails Network has been a significant partner with the city for more than thirty years at this point in terms of raising money almost annually for expansion and development of Lincoln's trail system and for promoting use of trail system. The maps that are available throughout the community are printed by the Great Plains Trails Network and distributed. The guidelines that were adopted many years ago for naming of Parks and Recreation facilities say that a facility can be named in recognition of an individual or a group's civic accomplishments related to the department's activities. And I would say that Great Plains Trails Network's involvement in supporting and promoting, supporting development of the trail system and promoting the system, and then this most recent effort of raising almost six-hundred thousand dollars for this bridge certainly is an indication of the significant civic accomplishments that they've made. I would let you know that I have had a conversation with the Great Plains Trails Network Board. They reluctantly, I think, are willing to accept the naming of this in recognition of their efforts. As the council and probably the community knows, they're an entirely all-volunteer group who do this amazing work on an ongoing basis. This comes to you with a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for approval. I would let you know that staff are also recommending approval of naming of this new bridge as the Great Plains Trails Network Connector, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have this afternoon.
No questions? Okay.
No questions, but a hearty commendation for this. GPTN's done amazing work in Lincoln, and we're lucky to have them.
Absolutely. Anybody else like to come forward on this item? Okay, you can stay up there, Mr. Johnson. Director, Johnson?
We have another item this afternoon that is.
Please do read it.
I'll read it.
Sorry, I apologize.
Though you're fine. Item five E is approving the naming of the trail segment extending between N Street and J Streets through Haymarket South as the Chris Beitler Trail.
Okay, Director?
And again, my name is Lynn Johnson. I'm the director of Lincoln Parks and Recreation. This is another resolution for naming of a trail segment within the city of Lincoln. This segment actually connects on the north end at N Street, just south of West Haymarket. Excuse me, and it will connect on the south end at J Street, which today is the end of the Jamaica North Trail. The connection is about a quarter mile in length. This is the master plan for South Haymarket Park and Plaza, and the trail will actually extend through this park to make that connection. The trail is proposed to be named as the Chris Beitler Trail. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has also reviewed this and is making a recommendation of approval for this. Again, the naming standards for Parks and Recreation facilities say that a facility can be named in recognition of somebody who has made significant community contributions related to the Parks and Recreation Department. I would let you know, and you probably do know, that Chris Beitler has been a significant supporter of Lincoln's trail system and of Lincoln's park system as mayor and as a former state senator. I have had a conversation with former Mayor Beitler about this, and he begrudgingly is willing to accept this naming. The timing of this is really being brought forward at this time because the Great Plains Trails Network is beginning to organize a fundraising effort for this section of trail, and they feel that it would be easier to fundraise for this if it had a specific name. And so that's, that's the reason for bringing it forward for city council consideration at this time. As I said, I'm bringing this forward to you with a recommendation of approval from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and also from staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Director Johnson on this one? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, I can think of no one more deserving than former mayor and state senator Chris Beitler, who contributed so much as Director Johnson has described, and who now walks the trails all the time with his dog named Lincoln, if you haven't read the article. So, thank you for your work and the Great Plains Trail Network on making this happen. I think it's always great to honor people that have done so much on behalf of the city and as a Parks and Rec Foundation fundraiser in the day as well, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
And so, thank you for bringing this forward.
My pleasure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Would anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we can vote on the resolutions.
Item five A. Accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July sixteen through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward.
I do also, oh, excuse me.
And I was going to say, I'd like to make a motion to amend, number one. Where we are removing the claim of Andy McNeil, and it should be removed from the list of denied claims.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, the motion to amend. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll on the motion to amend.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
And I'd like to make a motion to amend, number two. There is, to also remove the claim of Kenneth Noonan. That should be removed from the list of denied claims.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any other comments, questions? Please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, call the main motion. As amended?
Christiansen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five B is approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Saline County to define the mutual and separate responsibilities of each and the operation, management, support, monitoring, and evaluation of the Saline County Senior Services Program introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Christiansen. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five C is approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Polk County to define the mutual and separate responsibilities of each and the operation, management, support, monitoring, and evaluation of the Polk County Senior Services Program introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Christiansen. Any comments? Please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five D is approving the naming of the new trail bridge connecting the Rock Island and Jamaica North Trails as the Great Plains Trails Network Connector introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington? Questions? This is a good thing. Call the roll, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five E is approving the naming of the trail segment extending between N Street and J Streets through Haymarket South as the Chris Beitler Trail introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Christiansen, yes.
So, I'd like to just make a couple of comments here. Chris Beitler and I dealt with each other quite often and were often found ourselves on opposite sides of things, but we, we've always found ways to work together in the end and ended with a lot of mutual respect for each other. And he has been an advocate for trails, an incredible advocate, to the point where I even heard a joke once that if you wanted Chris Beitler to support something, just call it a trail. So, this is well-deserved, and the community really is better for the trail system we have.
Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
I want to say that this is really an exciting thing. As an avid user cyclist of the trails, rode them on Sunday, and I saw so many families out on all the trails. I tried to do a big loop of the city, and it's, it's amazing. It's such a joy to see people of all generations out there walking on the trails, running on the trails, riding their bikes, riding their trikes on the trails. It is really such a tremendous asset to our city. So it's something that we should all be very proud of, and it's, it doesn't go unrecognized. Lonely Planet, which is a big travel journal known worldwide, they listed Lincoln in the top ten cities in the United States for our hundred and seventy-five and growing, hundred and seventy-five miles and growing of trails throughout our city. It's an asset, and it's, it's a joy to see people utilize it.
Okay. And seeing none other, please call a roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Section six is our resolution for action only. Six A is appeals by Nancy Seltzer of the Planning Commission's conditional approval of special permit two-zero-zero-one-three to allow for a community unit plan with associated waivers to set back slot area block length and the sanitary sewer design standards on property generally located at South Forty-sixth and Hillside Streets, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Christiansen.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, I would like to move this item, pending, no date certain. I have been watching this project. I've been to the site. I've talked to the applicant. They still have a couple of issues they need to resolve, and they said they would appreciate not having the vote taken today. They'd like the vote taken when they've resolved their issues. They know it'll be on pending, no date, and they'll come back when they're ready.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Christiansen. Any other comments about moving this to pending? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward? Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
7A.
Section 7, 7A, is appointing Patricia D. Lopez as Health Director of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department.
Uh, yes, so we are going to have first reading, public hearing, and action on this, if we so moved to, but we'll listen to public hearing first. Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and present the nomination of Pat Lopez for the permanent director position of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department. Just a formal acknowledgement of the role she's been playing in our community since May of 2019, as we have both navigated challenges that are more familiar, and of course, the extraordinary challenges of 2020. I know that her leadership and grace and expertise has been greatly appreciated across the community. I respectfully ask for your approval of her nomination.
Thank you. Any questions for our mayor? Seeing none. Thank you. Question for Madam Clerk, do we need to suspend our rules to have public hearing? Okay. We can have our...
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Yes, we do, don't we? So, you need to...
I need a motion?
I'd make the motion to let people get their voice heard today.
There's a motion for first reading, public hearing, and action on this meeting, on this item.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any comments or questions about...
Is that, Mr. Christensen, go first.
I have questions.
Okay.
I'd like to call the city attorney up.
I think they'll take care of my question, too.
I'll wait till he gets up here to start the question. Basically, our normal procedure is to have first reading one week, and then the next week have public hearing and action. We're being asked to suspend this, and I'd like some questions just to get to the bottom of why we're going to do that. So, the first question I have is what is the legal status of Pat Lopez as Health Director at this moment?
Well, Yohanty Christie, City Attorney. Right now, Pat Lopez is the interim Health Director, she's been the interim Health Director since May of last year, I believe, 2019, and she's under, currently under contract, that contract was renewed again January of this year.
Okay, and so, given that, why is it important that we suspend the rules instead of wait till next week for hearing and vote?
Well, and I would say that certainly it's time to move past this, I would tell you that. Also, I think that probably most importantly, I think the mayor and Ms. Lopez have agreed that she will serve as the Health Director permanently. I think the, normally what happens, and I know that you understand this and are aware, but with resolutions, there'll be first reading and then a vote oftentimes the next week. Ms. Lopez has, again, been serving this capacity for well over a year, and I think that it's the position of a lot of people that they're ready to move forward on this.
Okay. Any other questions? Does anybody else have any questions for our city attorney? Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment before we vote. May I?
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say that I think some people don't know the history. We lost our Health Director, Siobhan LaSiter, to breast cancer. She was an amazing, dynamic, vibrant, incredible woman who was leading the department, and I feel very fortunate that, you know, Pat Lopez was available with the training, the expertise, and the guidance to step in. We did go out for a search, we actually interviewed a number of candidates, and we narrowed it down to three finalists, but after the Board of Health also had a chance for further interviews, and also weighed in with the city council and the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, we weren't, we weren't satisfied with the three finalists of living up to the reputation that Siobhan has led the department with. And so, for that reason, you know, we said, no, we were going to keep searching, and then we had asked Pat Lopez to step in because she has the exceptional credentials to be able to do so, and grateful that she has stepped up and led the department very ably during this pandemic.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Schell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Christie, thank you for coming forward. Help me understand the duties that the interim director is doing now, and if appointed, what the duties would be for the person appointed. Is there really any change in duties, responsibilities?
Certainly, I don't have any problem telling you that I do not believe that there will be significant changes from, as far as job responsibilities from interim director to the approved permanent Health Director. However, any specific questions about the, you know, responsibilities from the Health Director probably could be better answered by the, someone at the Health Department.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion to suspend our rules? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Excuse me, Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
I'd like to raise a point of order, please.
Okay, so now we're going to first reading.
Just call for testimony.
Yeah. She's, have you already read this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Public hearing then, please, no, out of order, sir. Sir?
You may testify on this item, sir, when, Chair.
I tried, I raised my hand, and several others did.
Sir, we're just opening it up right now for public testimony.
Just a little bit early.
Okay? And those for public hearing, if you would like to come up and speak at this time.
My name is Mark Gill, I'm a transplant to the Lincoln, Nebraska area. I was in the military, my folks were here, and I stayed because I liked Lincoln.
Me, too.
It's a nice, clean city, I've enjoyed living here. I don't know interim director Lopez personally at all, and I'm a newcomer to the political operations in the city. My question, when it comes to suspending rules and just moving ahead, is if she's been interim Health Director, and in the opinion of the board, the council here, and the other areas of city government, like the Health Department and such, she's been doing an adequate job in that position, why the rush to suspend rules? Let her continue doing the job, go through the normal procedures, and then let the decision made after we go through all the rules and procedures that would normally be followed, rather than just suspending and rushing ahead. There may be others that are more knowledgeable of the city, the director, the departments, and the other processes that take place here, that may have some input that are not present here today. And I think the rush to judgment on this and push something through without going through the proper procedural methods, methodology, is, I think we're shortchanging both the city director, as she tries to do the job, there may be other people that have some questions on this, so I would ask that we would not suspend the rules, but go through the normal process.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Thoughts? Okay, thank you for coming down, appreciate it. Anybody else would like to come forward and speak on this?
Good afternoon, Tom Nebelsick. Spell it?
Yeah.
N-E-B-E-L-S-I-C-K. And what, you like the address, too?
You don't need to, if you don't want to.
If I may, I'd like to read the email I sent to the council members quickly. Mayor, the mayor has asked the city council members to affirm the appointment of Pat Lopez as Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Director at the Monday, August 17 city council meeting. She has also made the same request to the Lincoln, excuse me, Lancaster County Board and the local Board of Health. Pat Lopez has not been officially appointed to her position by the Lincoln City Council, the Lancaster County Board, nor the local Board of Health as required under state law. She therefore has been acting illegally since assuming her position, and all of her actions and rulings are non-binding. The city council is supposed to allow for two readings before voting. This rule will have to be suspended in order to affirm Pat Lopez as the mayor has requested. This is out of order, improper, and unacceptable. The city council should not think it unnecessary to follow their own rules. Be advised, this action will make you complicit in perpetrating fraud on the people of Lincoln, since Pat Lopez has been acting in her capacity illegally since May 2019, well over a year. Pat Lopez should be removed from her position, as well as made to pay restitution for the compensation she has received. The mayor should be reprimanded and removed from office for using Pat Lopez to illegally mandate affairs of Lincoln businesses and its citizens. To right this wrong by caving to the mayor, who is also complicit in this fraud, is the equivalent of shutting the gate after the horse has escaped. Reject the mayor's request, do the right and honorable thing and the respectable thing for the besieged cities of Lincoln, citizens of Lincoln. Do not affirm the Johnny-come-lately and embarrassingly tardy request to affirm the appointment of Pat Lopez. I did receive some responses to this email, I'd like to read a portion of a response from Sandra Washington, quickly. While the city and county were regrouping to search again, this is after the January 20, excuse me, January 2020 extension, contract extension, the pandemic hit. I believe her educational background and more than 30 years' experience in public health administration at the local and state level makes Pat Lopez very qualified to be the permanent Health Director, unquote, Sandra Washington. My, my question is, while I appreciate the responses, I'm puzzled and troubled about why nothing has been done until this matter has been called into question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Can you please hold the applause?
Please, please.
Okay, who else would like to come forward and speak on this item?
Roy Helm, 2750 South 13th Street, here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I am in favor and support your action to suspend the rules and move forward in appointing Patricia Lopez as Health Director, and I think it's just important, she's done a very good, fine job, and it's a good recommendation, and I want to thank her for her work and service. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Who else would like to come forward and speak on this resolution?
Ellie Sampson. I'm here today to speak for the citizens of Lincoln whom we have chosen to silence. Per City Municipal Code 2.04.010 Rule 3.19, unless the council shall waive this rule by five votes, every bill proposed as an ordinance shall be read by title on at least three different days, and every bill proposed as a resolution shall be read by title on at least two different days. The purpose of this rule is to allow we, the people, sufficient time to make arrangements to attend at least one meeting to speak, support, or dissent for the bill. By placing the resolution to confirm Pat Lopez as Health Director as an action item during its first reading, you have not provided sufficient notice for those represented by the attached signatures which I submitted to the county clerk, city clerk, to be present today. That petition is up to 243 signatures. And by extension, you have also not allowed their voices to be heard. We, the people, know that this is not the first time in recent memory you have made this decision to suspend the two-reading rule. On March 16, when you confirmed Ms. Baird's request to grant a state of emergency, you suspended it as well that day. We are inclined to grant a bit of leniency for that decision, because we understand you may have truly believed COVID presented an emergent threat to the capacity of our healthcare systems. However, your decision to suspend that rule again today in a non-emergent situation is setting the precedent that you do not care from, to hear from the people you were elected to serve. We wish to put you on notice that we will not tolerate your disinterest in our voices nor your disrespect for our rights. We, the people, also know that these repugnant requests come from the position above you. We know the lack of integrity being displayed by this council is a direct reflection of Ms. Baird's leadership. We know that county attorney Condon reminded her to have Ms. Lopez confirmed as interim Health Director on March 1, 2019, nearly a full year and a half ago. We know that instead of having Ms. Lopez approved in accordance with Nebraska law, the city of Lincoln entered into a consulting agreement with Ms. Lopez. The effect of this agreement was to appoint Ms. Lopez as Health Director while simultaneously avoiding the approval requirements set forth in statute. We, the people, know you have received statements of support for Ms. Lopez as acting Health Director. We are putting our voices on record stating no amount of support for her qualifications or performance can negate the fact that she was complicit in perpetrating fraud upon the citizens of Lincoln and Lancaster County, and therefore should be excluded from holding public office both now or at any time in the future. It is our intention to put each of you council members on notice that we, the people, have had enough of these backdoor dealings, and we will hold you accountable. We, the people, ask you today to restore our trust in you as our elected representatives by voting no on any motion to suspend, which is already passed, and we ask that you vote no to approving Ms. Lopez, and instead insist on an open and transparent search for the appropriate and accountable public Health Director.
Thank you, Ellie. Any questions for Ellie? Seeing none, thank you. Who else would like to come forward and speak at this time?
Afternoon, council members. Robert Boers, my name. And I have a prepared statement I'd like to read. I'm here to talk about the pandemic that never was, all the damage that's been done in the name of helping people, and what you can do about it today, if you so choose. First, some hard facts about the pandemic that never was. Cause of death determination is easily corrupted by physician bias, politics, and news media, especially when monetary incentives are offered, as they have been this year. Therefore, we have a lot, we have to look at all-cause mortality, which is not susceptible to such bias. In comparing all-cause mortality in Nebraska for the first 30 weeks of 2020 with the same period in the previous three years, we find there is no abnormal rise in deaths this year. 2017, 10,038 deaths. 2018, 10,063 deaths. 2019, 9,934 deaths. 2020, 10,084 deaths. I added all these numbers up myself from the CDC website. We have 21 more deaths this year at the 30-week mark than we had in 2018. By your logic, but, excuse me, but what logic, excuse me, by what logic are we calling 2020 a pandemic? By your logic, and by your support of an open-ended extension on the mayor's emergency declaration, you, you should have, we should have declared 2018 to be a pandemic year, as well as there were 25 more deaths that year over the same period the previous year. Now, let's look at the alleged COVID-19 death count for Lancaster County thus far. We have 19 deaths attributed to COVID-19. It is not stated, but all of these deaths involved comorbidities, hence the bias. 16 of them involved people 60 years of age and over, eight involved people 80 years of age and older, obviously people in the prime of their lives. That was sarcasm. By what logic do we call this a pandemic with these numbers? Now, let's look at the case numbers that are showcased on the Lancaster County dashboard and dial every day. What do these numbers mean? What does a case mean? Well, I got on there today and actually explored a little bit more than I had prior, and a case is defined as nothing more, nothing more than a person who tests positive. That's it, no symptoms or illness required. Just a positive lab result from a test that allegedly, test for a virus that allegedly causes COVID-19 disease. Why do I say allegedly? Because the test itself has never been tested. It has never been proven to accurately and reliably test for this novel pathogen called COVID-19, and only this novel pathogen, it hasn't been done. The positive test result has no predictive power whatsoever in terms of who will be or will become ill or require hospitalization. A positive test result says nothing whatsoever, except that a person tested positive for something, what we do not exactly know. A scientific theory with no predictive power is not a theory at all, it's just noise, or politics of the worst kind. So, again, where is your pandemic according to these numbers? This brings me to the second point, the damage done by the overreach here, through the extended emergency declaration, your approval of such, and through the health measures. I don't have much time to go into detail here.
One minute.
One minute?
Yep.
But your decision to terminate your responsibility, your representative responsibilities, hold this mayor accountable, and instead to give her and her Health Director an open-ended and unprecedented license to implement extreme, arbitrary, intrusive, abusive, pernicious, and draconian health measures has done more harm than any virus ever could. Now, I'm going to slide down here and skip up, skip through a lot... Now, I'm going to slide down here and skip up, skip through a lot. Here's the bottom line. The council has to take ownership for all the damage that's been done by these measures. The measures are a direct function of your trigger-happy action to give our mayor and her Health Director an open-ended emergency situation when an emergency didn't even exist at the time. It was all hype, you were played. But all might be forgiven if you would do the right thing today. And what is that? You can, you gave her an open-ended emergency. I see, I see no reason why you can't take it back. This is your chance. Do something noble. There is no pandemic, not in Nebraska, anyway. Nebraskans are tough. Until you start taking away their livelihoods, the livelihoods by which they love, live, and laugh, and then they get mad. Rescind the, rescind the unlimited extension you've approved. Send shockwaves around the world, watch Lincoln thrive, allow citizens to take responsibility for their own lives, choices, and actions. We are not children. Well, I'm almost done. Thousands of our citizens, including many business owners, will not bow to these mandates, anyway. They are nonsensical. To wear a mask to a table and then take it off is nonsensical. You're only dividing the community, nothing, doing nothing, just because, doing something just because everyone else is doing it is a terrible way to think. Our mayor should, should already have all the funding she needs. I implore you to return us to normal and set a great example for the rest of the country and show the rest of the world that Americans still have courage. I don't expect you to take me up on this challenge, but you can surprise me. In closing, the urge to save humanity is almost always a false face for the urge to rule it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward at this time?
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Stephanie Remus. I've lived in Lincoln for 11 years, and I've been involved in business with operations and marketing for 20 years, and I hold two different master's degrees. I've seen a lot of negotiations done over the years that were done well, and I've seen a lot that were done poorly. Ones that were motivated by greed, or ones that designated strictly to maximize profits, regardless of people. I say that because negotiations like this happen in any environment, both economic and political. We like to think that all decisions are data-driven, that solid information and critical thinking is used to decide what is best, especially for an entire city of people. So given that, we're assuming that some of these facts somehow were missed, and that they can be helpful in revising some of our current regulations to help our city thrive again. According to the CDC and Census.gov, the total death rate that Robert just mentioned for Nebraska in the first 30 weeks has been .52, I'll speak in percentages, for 2020. In 2019, it was also .52. In 2018, .53, and in 2017, .53. So regardless of the presence of any virus, whether it's influenza or something labeled COVID-19, our state has not seen an increase in the total death rate. According to the Lancaster County Health Department Dashboard, the case count has continued to decline, which is great, over the last five weeks, from 360 to 306, 206, 158, and 9. The dial also indicates that there have been 19 deaths from COVID, but the CDC also notes that in 2019, there were 14 deaths from influenza, also in Lincoln. All of that data is going in the right direction, yet the dial last week did not move in the right direction. According to the CDC, a state of emergency is necessary when there's no known treatment during a pandemic to help prevent the spread. Various medical doctors, however, across this country that are not on mainstream media are finding ways to treat COVID. Dr. Richard Bartlett of Houston, Texas, has successfully treated over 1,300 patients with COVID-19 through the use of a nebulized steroid, an antibiotic, and zinc. Japan and Taiwan have numerous studies of this same treatment that are also posted that successfully treats COVID-19. Dr. Jeffrey Barck, an M.D., cites the importance in preventing COVID by the use of vitamin C, D, and zinc. And of course, we've all heard the success of other therapeutics that are currently banned in some locations. In three to five minutes, I don't have enough time to go through all the data that's out there, and I certainly implore you and others in the health field to continue to research it as this state continues to change. But Lincoln, Nebraska, by the numbers, is not under a state of emergency. There are tens of thousands of people in our city who know that the hospitals have not been overrun, and they are currently not overrun. That the death rate from suicide in this country has surpassed the death rate from COVID. That masks only spread fear and increased child trafficking. And that these thousands of voters also know that the procedure was not followed in appointing the current interim Health Director. And she does not contain the qualifications by current speculations, by current requirements to hold that position. And she serves under the leadership of a mayor who allows for some rights to be exercised, but not others. We trust that this council, who is elected to serve the City of Lincoln, that you will use data, that you will use critical thinking, and that we understand that people are now involved, and we do expect you to make better decisions for our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll go faster if we don't applaud, but... That won't change it.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm gonna just say, my name is Gretchen Hess. I'm just gonna say I'm a little nervous because I never thought I'd be up here speaking about this, but this has touched me in a way, and has affected me and my family in a way that's very personal to me. So just bear with me. I'm here today to make a formal request. Please don't vote to confirm Patricia Lopez as the Health Director. We can and should do better for all citizens. As part-business owner of a bar, The Brass Rail, I would like to share with you our experience with Patricia Lopez, the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, and the mayor. Our mayor, when issuing the current DHMs, publicly stated multiple times that the focus was to be on education and not enforcement. What happened was to the contrary. The Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department forced closure on a few bars after stating that repeated attempts to work with the owners had failed. This simply was false. At the onset of the DHMs, all bars were contacted by the Lincoln Police Department upon the mayor's request to hand out, hand out the new DHMs. That was the only form of communication we ever received, period. Upon the bars being forced closed, we, as business owners, were shocked. We were wondering why the need for such a drastic response. I researched and found via a media release that they had cited the Lincoln Municipal Code 818140. Being proactive and wanting to educate myself to be sure to stay in compliance, I began researching, but I had a few questions. I started trying to find the policies and procedures that go into such a decision. I wondered how the mayor and Patricia Lopez came up with a 24-hour period. Was there a course of action, of enforcement, if a non-compliance order was issued? And if so, what or where were the rules? After contacting many agencies, I realized a few things. The only two places that didn't want to help educate me were the mayor's office and the city attorney's office. This was concerning to me. After getting ahold of a health inspector, we realized that there was an error. Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department was supposed to hand-deliver letters stating a forced closure could and would happen if found to be in non-compliance. Only problem is that they weren't delivered to every bar, namely, the one that was forced closed. That certainly would have been helpful. By this time, damage to our businesses by the media and public perception had already occurred. Was this the intended effect the mayor and Health Director wanted? It's a very underhanded way to conduct business. Had we all been properly notified, decisions would have been made as to how to best balance the issue at hand. A meeting was scheduled by the bar, by, by the bar owners with the Health Department, of which was recorded. It was brought to our attention that the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department assumed that we knew the forced closure was a possibility based solely on the fact of the press conferences. Where and when was that stated? Also, that should not be the only source of information, especially when our ability to conduct business is in jeopardy. There are so many different press releases, it's hard to stay informed of all the changes. That's why personal face-to-face interactions usually is the best form of communication, especially in our industry. Normally, when there's an issue, especially of this magnitude, an offer, an officer, investigator, or inspector makes contact with us and addresses the issues. I've also learned that there was a group of five individuals, city attorneys, Health Director, the environmental public health supervisor, and a food inspector supervisor, who decided how long the closure would last. In the meeting, they came up with a 24-hour rule. Video evidence shows the Health Department placing a closure order on a business on O Street at 3:30 PM. Closure went into effect at 5:00. They didn't give the business more than one and a half hours' notice. The press release was put out shortly after the business was tagged. Definitely shows a coordinated plan to send a strong message, I'd say. They were organized enough to make sure the press knew, just not organized enough to give the business the letter in the first place. That's not how any other agency goes about business. Every rule, ordinance, violation, and issue has proper procedure for, in place for an infraction. Public health is a very important, no doubt, but so too are the vitally needed guidelines and regulations. How is this type of decision not regulated? Also, if they were focusing on education, as the mayor stayed, stated, why the need for the undercover health inspections? When asked at the meeting why they didn't communicate or educate us as to what the issues observed were, they stated they were instructed by the Health Director to not engage in discussions on the issue, and that this was in an effort to send a strong message to all bars. Generally, when dealing with our inspectors, if they notice an issue, we discuss it and work together to get it resolved. The way this was done undermines our great relationship and rapport we've developed and maintained with our individual Health Inspectors. We usually collaborate to work effectively for the benefit of all involved. Back in March, Nebraskans did what we always do, and we worked together for the greater good. We quickly understood the magnitude of the situation, and that sacrifice was necessary. Now, five months later, we are no better off. When in an emergency, the best plan is to identify what you're up against and come together to form a plan. We usually work together to find balance for every situation, and then we realize that balance is essential and necessary. This time is, this time, for some reason, we are putting all the effort into public health while failing to remember the other parts of the equation.
Can you wrap it up?
Sure. It's certainly evident the mayor's concerned about the rights of some, of just some of the citizens here. When you govern, you don't and shouldn't get the authority to apply laws differently. I'm also increased, concerned with the increase of violence to our city. Is anyone addressing this issue? Maybe the efforts should be focused on all parts of public health and safety versus pointing a magnifying glass on one. I only say this because my family's been affected. I have four children at home. When I don't have the right to do business and operate a business and it's forced closed, that affects me. That affects me, and that makes me wonder why we're applying laws unfairly and differently. So, in closing, as you're aware, the City Council, you all, are comprised of representatives of the public. You, together as a team, politics aside, need to weigh the importance of balancing the appropriate responses during this time, and will be held accountable. I hope you strongly consider pausing, just like this gentleman said, to make the best decision on who is capable of effectively holding the position of Health Director. As learned by experience, the Health Director has been given the supreme power of all the land here in Lancaster County and Lincoln, and that is the ability and the authority to decide my fate and others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gretchen. Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
Hello, council members. I'm sure you all know who I am. Benjamin Madsen. Obviously, as Gretchen was talking over there earlier, the fact or the matter that you can just come in and close our business and lock us up and have the police keep us out is absolutely crazy to me. I mean, that's, that's crazy. You know? Why would we enforce a law that isn't a law to begin with? Because obviously, it was proven in court that she doesn't have the, the power to come up with a DHM and for it to be enforced upon us legally? I'm, I'm confused as to how, you know, right now, you're changing it to where it's gonna be legal for her to have that power, but she was already found to legally, to not have it in the first place. So basically, we're hiring somebody that did something, or you're approving somebody that did something illegally, and now you're gonna make it to where she can make it legal. That confuse, that baffles me. I mean, absolutely baffles me. It's not the way it works. The other part of it is, obviously, you know, the, the state of emergency, I don't understand what that is because it's never been fully defined. The other part of it is, is that giving the mayor an open-ended state of emergency to do whatever she wants, whenever she wants, is tyrannical. It's absolutely 100% against what we, the people, are trying to do with our lives. There's no way on earth that we can continue to function at this level of business, at this level of humanity, and, and survive it. It came up here in good faith, thinking that there would be some logic up here, that we wouldn't rush to a decision. Because we've done that in the past, and it's backfired on us. We need to take a moment, step back, look at the data, look at the information, and make an educated decision, not a rushed decision. I've had a great stand, an upstanding, you know, relationship with the Health Department. I've been operating as general manager for Madsen's Bowling Billiards for the last 10 and a half years. There's never been any violations in the paper of us not following the health mandate and making sure that, you know, the food is done properly and that we're all up to speed and, you know, following all the rules that we're supposed to be following. We've been doing it from day one. The only thing that we didn't do is we were not following the mask mandate because it's up to the citizen to make that decision. It's not up to us. I'm not a doctor. It is not my responsibility to make sure that people take care of their own health. I mean, period. That's not my job. But to force it upon people and to drive away business because that's what it would do if I went up to somebody and said, "I'm sorry, you can't be in here because you don't have a mask on. You gotta leave." They're never coming back. That's lost revenue. When it comes down to lost revenue, obviously, this city's gonna be in a world of hurt if we don't have Cornhusker football. I think we're all aware of that. The Haymarket's going to struggle immensely. And it's not about, it's not about the owners, it's not about the, the GMs, it's not about all of that, it's not about a profit. We have employees that work for us that have families. They need to feed their families. There's a lot more to this than just, you know, automatically just setting this boundary and saying, "This is how it is," and that's all there is to it. Rushing a decision is not the right way. And obviously, since this was done illegally in the first place, why are we trying to make up for it by doing, by appointing somebody that doesn't have the right to do so in the first place? So I'm asking for you guys, and for you gentlemen and ladies of the, of the council, to look at this with open eyes and remove yourself from the politics of it for just a second. Let some logic sink in. Because I definitely think that we're rushing to make up for something that was a mistake to begin with. And by doing that, there's no justice for this, none whatsoever. And I will quit there, and, you know, listen to your constituents. If you look at the polls that have been, the polls that have been out there, even on, on ABC Channel 8, it was, I think it ended up at 98,000 people did not support the mask mandate. 98,000! I mean, you're looking at well over a third of the population of this city, in this county. Those are people that aren't here right now, today, to voice their opinion, and their say-so in this. So please, listen to your constituents, me being one of them. This has to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else like to come forward?
Hi, Council. Todd Watson. For the sake of brevity, there's been a lot of great points made, and I won't rehash those points, but I do want to strongly affirm them. Excellent citations of statute, procedures, process that are not being followed. That should be a warning sign. What I want to touch on that hasn't really been talked about, or it's been just briefly on, is, again, how we're set up as a government. I have very strong concerns with the actions of our executive branch and departments. And this is an attack on your body. And I'm imploring you to protect the power of the council. It is not optionable to delegate your legislative authority. It's not. The Supreme Court's ruled on it for Congress. We have statutes on delegating authority in the Nebraska State Constitution. And it applies to, to this executive branch as well. You cannot delegate legislative authority to these departments or that branch. The DHM, you read it, it's whereas, whereas, whereas. If you've ever been a legislative aide, that's what legislators do. It's an order that says whereas, 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 setting out statutes. She doesn't have that power. They're trying to take your power. They need to come here, you write the statutes, not her. We cannot confirm somebody that is taking the power to write pseudo-laws into that role. That's egregious. It's awful. So, the end of that order, I'll just read it. They didn't find, "Any person who has found to have violated any provision of this order outside the city of Lincoln shall be guilty of a class-three misdemeanor, subjected to three months imprisonment, or a..." three months imprisonment, or $500 fines, or both. Each day such violation continues after notice of violation has been given. To the offender may be considered a separate offense." So they write the law, and they're gonna enforce the law? Hello, this is Civics 101. Civics 101. The executive branch doesn't write law, and it, it enforces law. You guys write the law. You need to approve it. Someone that would take the power on themselves to do that to the citizens must be stopped, period. Two, and it's not my main point, many of you are at the funeral with me. I lost my best friend to suicide. You heard me speak to it. Uh, I've, I've dealt with that pain. I'm not a big fan of the CDC right now, but here's what the CDC wrote last week. We have four times the number of cases of anxiety, this is what they're surveying, three times the depression, two times the amount of people considering suicide. This is the crisis. What we get from our Health Department is COVID-24/7365, and the looming health crisis not being discussed is the depression, the anxiety, the suicide, and there is no emphasis. It is the wrong director when you can't even emphasize those points going on. I've lost my best friend. It's awful. It's tragic. And the, what goes into these things is having purpose, which is jobs provided by these businesses. Having that purpose in life is very important. Socialization is very important, whether that happens at bars, churches, with each other. The most therapeutic of the day after COVID was getting my hair cut by a stranger, talking about nothing because I was surrounded by another person. It was awesome. Stop these orders so people can socialize, hang out, have fun, do business so we can feed each other, and address this anxiety, depression that's happening and prevent these So in closing, I, your authority is being attacked severely by this executive branch. You write laws, they don't. You read that D H M, it reads like a legislative bill, which is scary, and you can't write laws and enforce laws in the executive branch, period. And my education to fellow citizen, these are laws. It was touched on today, they're not laws. She has no power to write laws. Do not affirm someone taking this tyrannical action, and we need a Health Director that understands we're not gonna go to the Dark Ages again on mental health and just be focused on physical health 24/7. We need someone with the competence to understand that and is not gonna act in the name of tyranny.
Anybody else would like to come forward at this time?
Oh, hello, Council. You know how much I love coming here. Um, I had, do have some handouts. I also, um, I won't wear a fake mask, but if I may, I have enough respect for you guys. If you can do the same back, that'd be great.
Could you state your name?
John Herms. Sorry, I'm a smoker, so. Mr. Schob, uh, you have impressed me on the council. You're one of my, one of my favorites to listen to your thoughtful questions. And Councilperson Washington, same. Um, Ms. Ward, you're sharp as a tack. Uh, Mr. McGinnis, you know, you're okay. Uh, Mr. Bowers, you were my T A at UNL, and we got along, I felt very well, and obviously had mutual respect when you were in a leadership position in that role. Uh, Mr. Christensen, also thank you for your service. And, uh, Ms. Raybold, that was a embarrassingly brazen display of disrespect to the people in this room, how you behaved.
Uh, this administration, it, I've watched it very closely. It's, it's corrupt, it's abusive, it engages in dirty politics, and you're all better than that. Minus. I encourage you to place that aside and, and really think, uh, the mayor wrote, or actually spoke publicly, uh, on her social media and saying, "As you get ready to head back to school, I encourage you to take a moment to reflect on all the challenges you and your friends have faced and overcome so far this year. Just five months ago, this pandemic sent you home abruptly after spring break, leaving your locker still full of jackets and posters and crumpled homework assignments in your backpacks, leaving your hearts heavy as you watched a semester that was supposed to be full of baseball and track, school plays and choir concerts, proms and yearbooks, joy nights and joking around in the hallways disappear overnight. And the losses and challenges we've experienced in 2020 and the path forward can feel overwhelming at times, and I'm here to say, if you feel this way, you are not alone. Everyone in our community is working to overcome a loss or challenge in one way or another right now, and in ways that are visible and not so visible to the rest of us. With this in mind, I urge all of you to take two pieces of wisdom to heart. First, in the words of the author Wendy Mass, be kind. For everyone you meet is fighting a battle you know nothing about, and second, a small bit of good, a small feat of kindness planted goes a long way. Acts of kindness create powerful ripples that change people's lives, including your own, for the better. So as you head back to school, spread kindness in your wake, not because I or anyone else told you to, but because that's who you are and that's who we are in Lincoln, Nebraska." So with those points of wisdom, um, I think those are important, but I think it's also important to note that the pandemic didn't shut this down administrative, administratively, the government did. That's a form of gaslighting, psychological manipulation in which a person or group covertly sows seeds of doubt in targeted individuals or groups, making them question their own memory, perception of the world, or judgment, often evoking in them cognitive dissonance and other changes, including low self-esteem, using denial, misdirection, contradiction, misinformation. It involves attempts to destabilize the victim and delegitimize the victim's beliefs. I, I warned you all about Patricia Lopez, December 2019, before the pandemic. I, I told you very clearly what her power grab play would be prior to her doing it, and look what happened today. Terrible. They determine talking points that have emotional pull, and they connect with vocal types, create media blitz campaigns, scaring them. It's alarmist. They use pro-narrative-minded authorities on the subject to provide the foundation of support. You know, what if we can only save one child? They deploy circular reporting and group think tactics to artificially raise public outcry, and they use that public outcry to justify billion dollars or million dollar taxpayer expenditures, and they do it all over again. Now, I'd like you to look at the handout that I provided to you, which is a very good, very good write-up from Morrell County in Nebraska. It, it highlights that all persons are by nature free and independent. They have certain inherent and inalienable rights, among them, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The right of the people to assemble, to assemble peaceably shall never be abridged. The property of no person shall be taken or damaged for public good without just compensation. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, property without due process of law, nor be denied equal protection of the laws. You, you had a woman up here that was crying, like, about her business, like, and she was sad. And speaking of, of suicides, I lost one of my good friends to this too, uh, and he served in the Marines. And, and seeing the kind of devastation caused by poor policy when you have so much power, respect it and find someone else to serve in this role, please.
Thank you, Justin. Any else like to come forward at this time?
My name is Cindy Wendelin. Um, I live in Lancaster County, do business in Lincoln. I agree with everything that's been said recently, um, and I'm gonna start with the suicide story as well, because this is something that has to be addressed. A mask is fine if you wanna wear it. For people who only hear doom and gloom, and you must wear a mask, and these are your limitations, and this is how much you can or cannot work, creates significant depression, anxiety, suicide issues. My grandson, I'm not very old, so you know my grandson's not that old either. He had a friend commit suicide this last week. Our children are so overrun with the emotion of no hope, no future, because we have blanketed them with fear after fear after fear. They are truly afraid. We've listened to the fact that the death rate here in, in our city is no greater than it was four years ago, or three years ago, or two years ago. So there is no pandemic. That, you can just throw that back over your shoulder. That is not real, but it's perpetuated as real, and children that can't understand that take it to heart and do terrible things to themselves. In the first three months, I know the suicide rate in California quadrupled because of this What is a virus? It doesn't matter where it came from. A virus is a virus, and those of you who have kids have taken them to the doctor, the doctor says, "It's a virus, it has to run its course." That's what a virus does. We may be in the very same numbers at this time next year as we are right now. So if you continue to put this kind of stress on people, on their businesses, on their future, on their families, I would hate to think of what our city would look like at that point in time. We've recognized the fraudulent activity of a lot of people here, uh, and, and the appointment of a fraudulent person who is overstepping her boundaries significantly. I just wanna leave you with a picture. You all are putting your knee on the neck of the citizens of Lincoln and causing irreparable damage in some situations. And that needs to be looked at and not just rubber stamped and pushed aside, and you run on forward with your political agenda. Your knee is on the neck of Lincoln, Nebraska, and please make wise decisions. Please don't follow down a path that's going to destroy a lot of people.
We have someone else who'd like to come forward at this time?
Good afternoon, and I thank you so much for your time. First and foremost, um, I just want you all to know, we prayed for you while you were in chamber. Um, we're grateful for your service to our community.
Can you state your name?
My name is Heidi Berry Retley. I, I'm a Lincoln citizen. What I want to convey is, like what was mentioned earlier, we have choices. Having been in leadership many times in my life, I will say, I had to set my own thoughts on the back burner, because when I'm in leadership, when any one of us are in leadership, you know, it's about serving others before yourself, before your own agenda. It's listening to those that are maybe more wise and have a better idea of, of various different things. I know also, when we are put in those positions, it is imperative for us to listen to those who might be more equipped, say, in the medical fields and that such thing. I will say, I have experience, having dealt with the CDC from Atlanta, um, and the Health and Human Services here in the state of Nebraska during the H1N1 outbreak. We were the first location in Maxwell, Nebraska, that had this virus come through, because we had some campers at this camp, um, at that point in time, and came in from Texas. I will tell you, we were on speakerphone tw, through, I'm gonna say, over the course of four days, nonstop with the CDC, and I'm gonna tell you, they didn't know what in the world they were doing. And that concerned me. And several months ago, I will tell you, um, I know enough about economics, and I know enough about, uh, the, the global things that go on in this world. I've studied it immensely. I have family that have been in federal government, appointed by presidents. I have, my grandfather comes from a, uh, he's a man of the highest integrity, was in the ag industry and was sought out globally. He warned me in the late eighties, early nineties, he went to a forum, he went to an ag forum. This man is a man who, the ExxonMobil Vice President came to his funeral. The Vice President from, uh, Cargill also came. He was a man of the highest integrity, and they specifically came up and told me that that was who he was. So I'm only saying that to give you an idea. He told me, he learned that everything, all seeds, everything was going GMO. And in the course of time, what was gonna happen to our health, we're not, now we're starting to see that. We're also seeing an immense overreach with, there again, the CDC. Some people put trust in them. I will never give blanket trust. I need, I need accountability. We all do. We all need accountability, and we're, when we're getting our information straight from the CDC, not getting a cross-section of, of wisdom from varying different, tremendously well-decorated, uh, medical officials. I have, I have numerous friends globally who've reached out to me and have said, "You've got to stand firm. You have to share the truth." My, if I, if I as a physician, and we've already seen it everywhere, if I speak up, I could lose my job, I could lose everything I've made, I've built up, and I think, that's a huge red flag, isn't it? When we are being censored, when they're being censored, the truth is, it's a real cause of concern. I'm, I've been in ministry, I will tell you, the number of phone calls and communication that I have also received from people that are struggling with anxiety, suicide, is through the roof, and it is heartbreaking to, to literally walk someone off, off from jumping over, from taking a bullet. I, I have a fairly good idea, it seems as though we are all Lincolnites first and foremost. We have hearts, we always have. We serve one another in this community. I implore you, please, let's, let's go through the proper channels, let's work together, let's build bridges, and I'm here also to tell you, there are people worldwide right now watching what's going on here, and they are excited, because there's friends of mine in New Zealand, there's friends of mine in Australia, there's friends of mine all over the world who are saying, "Help us, we can't even move in our city. China, Wuhan is happening all over. We are not going to be that. We can't." And I implore you, the control right now is in your hands, and I, and I really, I beg you, let's work together, let's, let's look beyond the CDC, let's, let's give other options, let's check into other options. God bless you, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else who'd like to come forward at this time? Anyone else?
Hello, Councilmembers. I'm Fan Sean Blythe. I just want to agree with a lot of the people here in the audience today, and I do not want you to suspend the rules today. It seems like it's illegal, according to some people that have spoke, and I want you to go through the normal process of voting Pat Lopez into office, who's an RN, not a doctor, into the position of Health Director. Also, I want to point out her consulting salary of $14,000 a month. That's $168,000 a year that our tax dollars are giving her for a consulting fee. The former Health Director, excuse me if I pronounce her name wrong, Shianta, and God bless her soul, her salary was $10,000 a month, which is $122,000 a year. That's a difference of $46,000 a year, and I would like to ask each one of you, who put that salary into place? Benny, can you answer that? Sandra? Any of you? All seven, please. All seven, please.
We'll answer your questions later.
You will? It doesn't look like you know, you know? So anyway, I really hope that you consider all of us. If we wouldn't have all found out about this last week, I'm telling you, there would be a lot more here. And just to remind everybody, back here, three of these council members are up for reelection. So please put politics aside and do the right thing today.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? Okay. We'll call the public hearing closed. Is there anybody that, I guess we need a motion, don't we? No, we're closing the hearing.
You have to move the resolution.
Just move to the resolution. Sorry, Sony, if you could.
Item 7A, appointing Patricia D. Lopez as Health Director of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department, introduced by Bowers.
No, moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Rayboll. Yes, discussion now.
Well, as I read this, the last sentence of this resolution says that the appointment of Patricia D. Lopez to the position of Health Director of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department is effective August 18, 2020, is hereby approved. And all actions and decisions of Patricia D. Lopez as interim Health Director are hereby approved. I move that we divide that question, because it's two different things. One is appointment of Patricia D. Lopez as Health Director, and the other is approving all her previous decisions as interim Health Director. So those two items stand alone, independent of each other.
Okay. Do we, yes, city county, or city attorney? To divide this question on this resolution?
Thank you. You're on to Christie City Attorney. I think that anytime a councilperson moves to divide the question, I think the chair, if it can stand alone, then...
Do you believe this can stand alone? His question about change, taking out, is what, approved all actions and decisions?
That's correct.
Is, you want that taken out?
I want that voted on as a separate item.
Okay.
I mean, again, I would say that I think that the chair would decide if it could stand alone, if you're, are you asking, I mean, if you're...
I'd like your opinion, yes.
Probably.
Okay. Okay?
I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, it probably could stand alone.
So we can vote on the resolution and then...
You can vote on, you would vote first on the appointing Director Lopez to be the Health Director, and then it will be a separate vote to approve her decisions and actions as interim Health Director.
Okay. More than thinking about this. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have two things. First, I'd like to have an understanding of what actions are encompassed in that final statement. And secondly, if City Council would like a few more minutes, I would like to have a more confident affirmative on the ability of the question to be split.
Okay. Would you come forward again, City Attorney?
Unless you just need a few more minutes.
Would this, I have one other quick question, too. Does this need to be an amendment?
No.
No.
So if we vote one down, do we, okay, go ahead.
If I may, again, I understand I said probably, and maybe that's not, I mean, I think the answer is yes, right? I mean, I think that they can stand alone, I mean.
Then, my question is, if we don't approve all the actions and decisions on this, does that amend this resolution?
Why don't, I think you would just...
Are we just removing, we're removing a line or two?
No, no, we're not removing anything.
If we divide the question, we've amended the resolution. It's two pieces.
That's what I'm wondering.
If we divide it and don't approve the past actions?
Right.
That's an actual amendment.
It might depend on how you ultimately vote, but if that makes sense.
And I have, then I have another question for you. How important is it that we approve all actions and decisions that Ms. Lopez has done as interim Health Director?
Well, I think that's an interesting question. I mean, when you say how important, I mean, I think, at least, I would say that what is before you is approving her as permanent Health Director or not. The language about approving actions, I think, is a statement. There's probably, I think, I don't have it in front of me. I think there were some similar language, maybe in the recitals, about her job as an interim director. I would say that that language is, while not an exact mirror, it kind of mirrors that or is similar to the language that comes before it in the recitals. But again, the important thing, I think, that's before you is whether or not to approve her as the permanent director. I think maybe that answers your question?
Yes, it does. Okay. Do we have any other questions, thoughts, comments?
So the question is now divided?
Is now divided.
And we're going to vote first, or discuss first, the appointment of Sandra, excuse me, we're going to change it on the gear right now, Sandra. Okay, no, of Pat Lopez. So before we do that, I think we ought to hear from Pat Lopez. But to me, today, the question is, does the mayor have the right to have the appoint, to name the appointee of the Public Health Director and have that choice validated by the City Council, Board of Health, and the County Board? Does any mayor have that authority by right to appoint that person and expect that person to be approved? And I think, to me, the answer is yes. So as much as some people might not like it, I intend to support her appointment as the director, because it's the mayor's job to select that person, and that's the only person being put forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes. Councilperson Rayboll?
Well, I intend to wholeheartedly support Patricia Lopez as our Health Director. Her actions, her steadfast guidance, has really led Lancaster County to the position that we're in. I think people forget, Governor Ricketts declared our state of Nebraska in a state of emergency. The city of Lincoln, our mayor, and the City Council all supported declaring the city of Lincoln in the state of emergency. Our County Board members also did the same, declaring Lancaster County in a state of emergency, trying to deal with this pandemic that is so new and novel to all of us. I want to share with you some of the numbers and why Lancaster County is in a far better position than Douglas County, the second-largest population. Douglas County has a population of 571,327. 571,327. Lancaster County has a population of 319,000. So Douglas is not even twice as big as Lancaster County. Douglas County had 143 deaths due to coronavirus. 143 deaths. Lancaster County, we have had 19. Lincoln, our City Council, all supported the health measure to wear masks. That was started in the end of July, or towards the end of July, it became effective Monday, July 20. Why did we do that? We have proof. Our children in the city of Lincoln are in Lincoln Public Schools. They're going to school right now. Omaha Public Schools, they're closed. The children are learning remotely. You know, we talk about mental health, and I am so sorry, so sorry, Mr. Watson, for the loss of your friend and the loss of your son's friend. It's heartbreaking, because these are anxious moments for all of us, particularly those that are in business. And my heart goes out to my fellow retailers trying to stay alive and stay afloat. These are not easy times for any of us. But if I can look at the numbers and see clearly, Douglas County, 143 deaths, Lancaster County, 19, we are doing something right. We, our mayor, our City Council, took action quickly and forthrightly. Was it painful? Yes. It was very, very painful for all of us to go through this. But our goal, our ultimate goal, was to keep each and every one of us safe. I know Dr. Anthony Fauci said, and I'm sorry, I do respect our bars, but he said, you know, "Do we want to keep our schools open?" Please, I was very respectful when you all gave your comments. And I ask the same. Dr. Anthony Fauci said, "Do we want to keep the bars open, or do we want to keep our schools open?" And I know, when we reach out to people, they say, "We want to keep our schools open." And I think in the city of Lincoln, we have taken great steps to allow our bars and our restaurants to reopen. The problem is, people don't feel safe. No matter what extraordinary lengths and measures our bars and restaurants go to assure that we keep our people safe. I want to commend Pat Lopez. She has worked steadfastly. She has worked diligently. She has worked, please, I ask kindly, please, I was very respectful when you spoke. She has worked steadfastly on behalf of every citizen in the city of Lincoln to keep people safe. And by the way, she has operated with full authority, with full legality, endorsed by the mayor, by the City Council, and by the County Board in her actions. Every time Pat Lopez comes before us to speak and give us an update, I am so proud of the actions. I'm so proud that our curve is being brought down, because why? We have capacity in our hospitals, in Lincoln, in Lancaster County, to take care of any individual who may fall ill. We have that capacity, and I am incredibly proud of all the work that Pat has done, and I wholeheartedly support her as Health Director. And I want to assure you all that her actions have been legal. She has operated with the full authority of the City Council on everything that she has done, and I wholeheartedly support her. She has been diligent, and she has been the right person to lead our city. And why? Because our businesses are bouncing back. They are coming back. And it's because we are wearing masks to keep our kids safe, so that our kids can be back in school.
All right, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Anyone else would like to say anything? Okay. Ms. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I have not prepared remarks, and I'm not a great extemporaneous speaker, but I am going to make a statement. We may not have felt the pandemic in Lincoln, Nebraska, and Lancaster County in the same way that our fellow citizens in this country have felt it in Texas, and Florida, and California, and New York. But that doesn't mean that there hasn't been and that there still isn't a pandemic. I feel very fortunate to live in Lincoln, Nebraska. I realize part of this is the density of population. We don't have as many people. We're just in a better place that way. I trained as a scientist, and I understand that many people don't believe science. They think that science is an opinion. But science is made up of small facts. And you build on those facts as you gather more information. And sometimes, the hypothesis that you put out is wrong. And so you go back and you do another experiment. You research some more. All of us are being asked to be flexible, to be open-minded, and to also share in the sacrifice. And I know that the sacrifices that we have each had to face are different. I understand that people are anxious, depressed, angry, frustrated, fearful. I see this in my own child and her friends, and all of my friends. And I can feel it and hear it in your voices and in your stories. It is a very difficult decision to declare an emergency, and it was not gone into lightly. There is nothing that the interim Health Director has done that has gone beyond her authority. Whether that was interim or permanent, the authority is the same. I understand that you don't like the decisions. Everyone, I am speaking.
Yes, citizens aren't test subjects. What you're asking has to be...
I didn't suggest, and I don't mean to suggest, that you are test subjects. That is so far beyond what I'm trying to say. But everyone has the right to make a choice for themselves to wear a mask and not wear a mask. Everyone here has, don't applaud me. Don't applaud me, because I think it is an act of kindness to wear a mask. I think it's an act of civil gratitude to wear a mask to protect someone else from what comes from my lungs. Whether it's positive or negative, it is easy to make this sacrifice.
All right. Okay.
With all of this said, I am going to support Pat Lopez as Director. And the only thing that I have some caution about, but it is in the rearview mirror, is that we probably should have kept this open for two weeks. But even with two weeks, I would have supported Pat Lopez wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you, Sandra. Councilman Ward, do you have something?
I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I would want to add my support for Director Lopez. In light of everything that's been said, we've received, and no one's here tonight, today, it feels like it is tonight, necessarily to support her, but we did receive a large amount of, I did, council emails in her support, including the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, the Lancaster County Medical Society, and Tabitha Healthcare, who, along with a lot of senior care providers, have been doing a lot of work in long-term care to keep a lot of our loved ones, and I'm sure yours, safe during this time. So I know when this all started, I just called up a couple of friends of mine. They happened to be attorneys. And I said, "So now what?" And they weren't city attorneys. It wasn't City Council advice. And they said, "Listen to, listen to the science, listen to the public health officials, and do your homework." And so that's what I've tried to do. I know you don't necessarily agree with this, but Lincoln, the numbers speak to themselves. So I also intend to support Pat and thank her for navigating this incredibly difficult time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Show.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there are some questions about the procedure that we're going through, since we did suspend the rules. Would you like to go over that again to explain to the people in the audience where we are in this process?
Well, yes. We're, on this item today, we're going, we're doing first reading, public hearing, and action. For the actual resolution, we are dividing the question on, one, appointing Pat Lopez as our new Health Director. And two, would be, the second vote, would be on approving her past actions and and whatever she did before in the past. And that would be the second vote. Did I help you there, or? Okay. So the first one will be on that, okay. Will be appointing Pat Lopez. Do we have any other comments, questions?
My objection is not to the appointment, but not that you, that you just do the procedure.
Sir, you can't, you're done talking already.
Well, evidently, didn't do any good, because we didn't ask you not to appoint Ms. Lopez. We asked you to go follow procedure.
Sir? We've already, we've already passed that. So right now, we're at the point, at the, at the point, we are asking to appoint Pat Lopez.
I'm asking you to go back to the procedure.
Sir, will you, will you please be quiet so we can go on with our business?
Adhering to your own procedure. What you're doing is illegal.
Okay.
You're doing it is illegal.
It's your opinion, sir.
I'm not asking you not to appoint her. I'm asking you to adhere to procedure.
Sir?
Yes?
I'm done having a conversation with you. We're moving on to our vote. Please, call the roll on the resolution minus the last line, saying we appoint. So, please, everyone.
Spring is coming, there'll be a vote.
Okay. Call the roll. Madam Clark?
Am I calling the roll on the first division of the question?
Yes.
Okay. Show.
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybald?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Okay, call the roll on the second question.
Are there other comments? Discussions?
We can have discussion on the second part.
Do you have a discussion on the second part? Does anybody want to?
Public?
Talk? No.
No. It's a vote.
Yes, Councilman Raybald.
I just have a few more comments. You know, our job as elected officials is to provide public safety. Our job is to listen to science, to listen to health directives and guidance, and establish policies while respecting your rights. You know, there was a time, and it seemed like not so long ago, in our society, that all of our actions, certainly, I know my colleagues up here feel strongly that our actions that we vote on, that we support, are for the common good, and that we actually cared about our fellow man. And it seemed that that's what our faith system tells us to, that we have to care about our fellow men. But we also have to be concerned about the rights of the most vulnerable in our community, that we could actually be harming and putting at risk and possibly losing their lives should they get infected by any one of us. You know, what about, what about the rights of keeping our families, your families, my family safe? You know, I assure you that this novel coronavirus really doesn't give a damn about any of our rights, but we have to work together on coming up with solutions that keeps us all safe. You know, we have laws. You know, you can't smoke in public, because we know secondhand smoke can harm others. You can't drive drunk. You can't run red stoplights, because you risk killing others. And you know, you certainly can't own a tank. So, please, please, I ask you, these issues impact every life in our community. You know, some politicians say, you know, Marco Rubio, Republican senator from Florida, said, "Just wear the damn mask." Or Dick Cheney, former advisor to George W. Bush, said, "Real men wear masks." I think what I'm seeing and hearing from so many of you today is that we keep politicizing this issue. When Councilwoman Washington said it so clearly, we follow science. Whether you agree with it or not, you can't change a fact, no matter how much you disagree with it. I feel that many people have been misinformed and misled. Our medical profession, our medical profession tells us that face coverings help keep us all safe, and they do.
That's all, science.
We can't, we can't.
Please stay quiet back there.
We cannot make you care, but we can certainly pass laws that require you to do your civic duty.
My wife is also immune compromised.
Come on now. Call the roll, please, sir. Sir, will you be quiet so we can finish this?
We're on this mandate, none of us wore a mask.
Quiet. I don't, you're done talking. If you want to talk, you can go outside. Okay, so, call the roll.
Christensen?
No.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybald?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one.
Should we take a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Take a five-minute recess.